December 10th.
Good evening, it's now 6:30 and I'd like to call the Planning Commission for Monday, November 26th to order. Good evening, staff. Thank you for attending. Commissioners, thank you for attending. First order of business is approval of the agenda. Would anybody have any changes to the agenda, staff?
None from staff.
Commissioners, any changes? Stand for motion.
So move.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kimmonen. Any comment, any discussion on the agenda? None. Thank you. We'll move to a vote then, please. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. And the agenda passes. Our next item on the agenda is approve the minutes of the November 14, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, any changes to the minutes? Staff, any changes to the minutes?
None from staff.
Very good. With no changes, I stand for motion.
I move.
So move. Motion, we have a motion, second.
Second. Who wants to take the second?
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? We have a vote on the motion then, please. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the motion carries. Our next item is a public hearing for Buck Hill Incorporated for a Plan Unit Development Amendment to allow a temporary outdoor concert and related events held outside of a permanent amphitheater located at 14500 Buck Hill Road. And was this public hearing opened on the previous meeting?
Correct. It was opened and left open.
Okay, very good, then we don't have to open that. Presenting would be Ms. Dean. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Banky, members of the commission. So for some of you, this may be familiar. Back in 2017, the City Council approved an interim use permit and Planning Unit Development Amendment to allow Buck Hill to hold a concert series. That approval was up until November 1st of 2018. So any changes to hold a temporary outdoor concert would have to come back before the Planning Commission and City Council for recommendation and then a decision. The specific property, I'm sure many of you are familiar with, as you pass by on 35W, but it's on the west side of 35W. Surrounding the property is residential. We have our R3B Planning and Development Zoning District to the north, to the northwest, RD, R3D to the south, and then our one single family immediately adjacent to the west. This aerial photo gives you just a different perspective on the surrounding use. Buck Hill, it's zoned commercial recreational development was, has been operating as a ski and snowboarding and tubing facility for many years. Most recently, they've installed what's called their NevoPlast year-round type surface so people can ski or snowboard year-round. Throughout the years, there's been multiple planning developments to allow different types of uses so that Buck Hill could use the property in a year-round manner. At one point, approved was a, kind of like a farmer's market. And there's also an approval for outdoor storage of vehicles during the summer months when the property is not used as a winter facility. So just a brief history again, in 2018, Buck Hill applied for a planning at development to hold these outdoor concerts. City Council made some specific approvals. They allowed up to six concerts per year on an interim basis. In July of 2018, Buck Hill held their concert series from July 10th through 13th. They hosted four concerts. One was actually canceled due to, due to poor weather. They did end up holding a smaller concert within the building venue itself. In October of 2018, Buck Hill, knowing that the interim use permit was going to expire, they applied for a Planning Unit Development Amendment. At this time, the request is, it's very similar to 2017 with a couple of exceptions. One, Buck Hill hopes to host up to 10 concerts per year and they would like to end at 10:30 PM versus 9:30 PM, which was stated in the approvals. So those are the two big differences. Changes from 2017 to today also include some changes that we've made to our ordinances. For example, when this was originally approved, we didn't allow parking on temporary surfaces, which we do now, so that's eliminated from the request before you. And they've also made some improvements such as setting the parking back to meet parking setbacks, as well as they've made some improvements to the surrounding area regarding pavement markings that was highlighted as a traffic concern through the traffic report that was provided. And on November 14th, you did hear from, the public hearing was open. We published as a public hearing, but in order to allow time for a neighborhood meeting to occur, to hear more from the residents, the public hearing was continued. There was a neighborhood meeting held here at City Hall. Six attendees were, neighbors were at the meeting, and that was held on November 20th. So we're before you today with the full background in your packet and the full presentation. Since this is a public hearing, there is opportunity for more public testimony and the applicant is in the audience to help answer any questions and to provide information as well. Just another perspective, for reference, the star is where the proposed concert stage would be located. Same location as the 2018 concert series. And this kind of, the photo on your screen kind of gives a perspective of the hill. Different pictometry view. And then the site plan, which is included in your background as well. The red indicates the property lines of Buck Hill. And then the red highlighted area indicates the fenced-in area, which Buck Hill, basically that area is where the attendees and any vendors would be located. All the portable toilets, food trucks, and whatnot. So they really hope to bring people closer to the stage. Whereas, one may look at the site and say, there's a lot of land where concertgoers could be. No, they're really focusing people in towards the stage. We had the opportunity of going on-site to take a look at the, or I had an opportunity to go on-site to take a look at the conditions prior to the concert series kicking off. And these are just views looking west, looking east towards the stage. You can see in the background, the fence, cutting off areas where concertgoers could go beyond. And then another view, just looking east, the porta-potties, different tents, medical tents, and whatnot. Part of the concern from 2017 application was about parking management. Within the traffic report, they stated that they would be using shuttle service, relying heavily on people carpooling, using Lyft, Taxi, Uber, and then also using pre-sale parking tickets to help manage parking. And we didn't receive any complaints in response to parking directly with the city. The, you can see the signs of no parking with the, that Buck Hill provided to the neighboring townhome associations, as well as the signage that was on-site directing pickup and drop-off, and then the off-site parking directional sign. They used Burnsville Center for their off-site parking, which they do in the winter months as well. So, and again, we didn't receive any direct complaints with parking. There have been public testimony and in letters since the concert events that do state some concerns, but no direct complaints day-of. Most of the concerns that we heard related to the 2018 concert series were related to noise and vibration, complaints about the bass. And in your packet and on the screen is a map highlighting the actual phone calls, emails, or letters where we heard a noise complaint or vibration complaint. There were concerns about the hours of the amplified music. The 2017 had a cutoff time of 9:30 PM. There were complaints that the concert went beyond that 9:30 timeframe. There were also complaints regarding the decibel levels. Multiple people had stated that they had read on their cellphone apps that the decibel levels were an increase of what the MPCA regulations would allow. So that was a noted observation. There was noted a neighbor-to-neighbor issue regarding potential trespassing on a townhouse property. And then we did receive additional, just general comments, letters. The neighborhood meeting, as I stated before, six people attended that meeting. Similar concerns with noise, vibration, hours and days of operation, issues with potential trespassers on private property, and concerns about property values. I do want to note, we did also receive a number of compliments also, not only from people within a 350-foot radius of the site, but also from a local and regional level as well. Noise seemed to be the biggest complaint that we received. For reference, city code references the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency standards, which do drop off once you hit the 10:00 PM timeframe. Because of this, staff does request that further noise testing's done should this be approved during each concert event because of the level of concerns that we received, as well as the request to go beyond. The request is to go to 10:30 PM, so the levels drop off at that point. So staff's concerned, and we want to make sure that the noise level are within an acceptable range. This was information provided by the applicant during their 2017 application and as part of their conditions of approval. They had made, when they first came in, they had showed that they did not meet MPCA regulations, but as they revised the study, they came closer to meeting those requirements, and that's what this graphic's showing in front of you. Buck Hill did do day-of noise testing using their, their sound company that, their concert production company. We did, I did go on-site, and they did provide their, their readings on-site, but that was at one point in time. And so the MPCA models noise or regulates noise over a longer time period than that one point in time, but they did demonstrate that they were within compliance. But there are, there are concerns, that was just during their sound check. So there's one deviation that staff has highlighted, and the request is to increase the noise levels beyond what city code or the MPCA would allow after 10:00 PM. Staff does not support that request. We can't vary from MPCA standards, and so we want to make sure that they meet, they meet those requirements. There is a benefit to approving this planning at development. Certainly a regional and local attraction. There is certainly economic benefit, not only to Buck Hill, but the Burnsville. And the specific land use is typically allowed just with conditional use permit approval, but because there are multiple planning at developments already in place with Buck Hill, in this specific case, it's a planning at development amendment. Engineering considerations, I talked about this already a bit. The, essentially, the traffic concerns did not present themselves as we thought they might, and we didn't receive any specific complaints or concerns to our traffic committee. Planning considerations, highlighted in yellow are the new considerations compared to that 2017 approval. We believe concerts shall be limited to the 10 per year, that the concert shall end by 9:30, conclude by 10:00 PM for the, for the concert lighting associated with the stage lighting, that ticket sales are limited to 4,500 tickets, that the applicant shall provide proof of off-site parking contracts, for example, with Burnsville Center or a nearby church or other venue, that no parking signs, if required, are provided, and that Buck Hill security is in, is in place, and that they contract with our police department and emergency personnel. We're also asking that additional noise testing is conducted during each concert event, and that Buck Hill provide notification to property owners within 350 feet of the property 30 days prior to each event series. There were some concerns that people didn't know this was going on. They maybe knew that they were approved for a concert, but didn't know when it was going to happen. And so that's a new consideration. With that, staff does recommend approval of the proposal. Again, some of these I've already mentioned. Some of them are carryovers from 2017. I do want to state that Buck Hill, again, is in attendance. They do have concerns with some of the recommendations presented, and I believe would like to discuss those with Planning Commission. With that, I certainly stand for any questions. We do have our noise consultant from Bar Engineering available as well, if there's specific questions about noise.
Very good. Thank you, Regina. Planning Commission, questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have just one question about the presentation, Regina, and then more probably coming later. On the graphic you showed us with the red line fencing, just a point of clarification, just the interior of that was fenced, not the entire perimeter of the, of the hill, correct?
Specific to the concert series, correct. Buck Hill could probably answer what type of fencing they might have elsewhere on-site. I'm, I'm not sure if they have fencing in specific locations. Some areas of the property are heavily wooded around the perimeter as well, just to point out.
Okay.
This is winter conditions, or late fall conditions, but...
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Other questions, Commissioner Kimmonen?
Thank you, Chair. I'm curious about the history of this a little bit. Where did the, the six events come from in the initial proposal last year? Was there discussion about six versus 10 at that point? And then was there any discussion about weekday versus weekend events? And it seems like what they did last year was, was try to compact four of the shows into a, into one weekday type of event. Did we talk about splitting that up, weekends versus weekdays, and kind of getting an idea of when they plan to hold events?
So that wasn't something that really came up in, in discussion. The number of concerts was at the request of Buck Hill, and the weekday versus weekend wasn't really something that was discussed in 2017. There have been a number of comment letters that, you know, reference, we'd rather, you know, be on the weekend, but from a staff standpoint, we didn't have a position on that in council, and the Planning Commission before didn't necessarily weigh in regarding that either.
Thanks.
Questions?
More later.
Commissioner Anderson? This is a public hearing. It is, it is an open public hearing right now. We will be asking people who want to speak to come to the podium. We would ask that you give your name, and if you haven't signed in already, please sign in at the podium. We would ask you to be respectful of people's time, and if you have already submitted a letter or previous testimony that is already in the record, and we would ask that you not repeat that information. It's pretty much already been said. We do want you to try to keep things to new information or other comment. And with that, if there's anybody that would like to speak to this item, I'd ask you to come to the podium and give your name.
Hello. My name is Linda Stout, S-T-O-U-T. I live at 15,000 Windermere Lane in Burnsville. And I don't live within the 350-feet perimeter of whatever you call that, the sound perimeter. But last summer, my peace and quiet was shattered by this noise. I can't call it music when it's so far away, and you can't understand the lyrics, can't hear the, hear the tune, but you can hear the rhythm and the bass. And I'm a music major, and this is not music. And this doesn't belong in neighborhoods. This is not something that should be plonked in the middle of thousands of people who are affected by the sounds, the noises, the traffic, the mess, the people running around the neighborhoods. I live 60 seconds from Buck Hill, by the way the crow flies, and that's not within 350 feet of Buck Hill. I am concerned that, about the noise, about the parking, about the traffic, about the distraction for the drivers on 35. I would be distracted by that. I mean, I would want to know what's going on. Security. And I noticed in your, what is this called? The ordinance number, amending Title 10 of the city, of Burnsville City Code. There's something in here that has me concerned. You call this a permanent amphitheater. What do you mean by that? Permanent amphitheater means it's going to be there a long time, and you're thinking of making it into something that's going to happen all the time. That, I'm worried about that. Permanent amphitheater. Where'd that wording come from? This is ski hill. This is for physical skiing, for physical activity. It isn't for noise. So I'm quite angry about this, and my letter that I wrote last summer states how angry I am. We already have a noisy neighborhood. I've complained about the noise for 13 years, and nothing has been done about it. This just adds to the noise. And I don't think that, you know, this, it doesn't belong there. It belongs at the Arts Center or at the State Fair. This isn't something for neighborhood of thousands of people who are, you know, just living their normal lives. It's, it's just going to affect all of us, and I would ask you, please, to reconsider all the neighbors that are affected. It's not just with 350 feet of Buck Hill. All of us will be affected, some way or another. This neighborhood all around Buck Hill has been... This neighborhood all around Buck Hill has been full of activities that shouldn't be happening in our neighborhood, such as drugs, such as gangs, damage done to property. I used to go out walking, and I won't go out walking anymore, even in the day. So, we don't need any more welcoming these people who, you know, aren't mature enough to realize that there are people, they're affecting people and people's lives. Please reconsider and put it somewhere else. Thank you, I'll just write my name here.
Thank you.
My name is Kenneth Pipes, and I live at 15409 Bryant Avenue, and I'm one of the three houses on Bryant Avenue that actually buck back up to Buck Hill on the west side. I've been there for 40 years. And Buck Hill has a short period of time to make any money in this snow season, you know? They got started early this year, thank God, but there's times when they're lucky if they get going by Christmas. And if Buck Hill can make some money some way, the noise hasn't bothered me for 40 years. And if that turns into high-density housing, I think you will see more traffic than you will for any concert, because it'll be solid housing. And we have to let Buck Hill make a buck or two, you know? And, so I'm, I live about 100, 150 feet from the lift, and they do not bother me. And I've been here before when people have complained about snowmakers, and it's kind of like going to my house by an airport, I would expect airplanes. So I think you, people have to let Buck Hill do their part and see if they can make some extra money. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak, please?
Hi, my name's Charlie Miller, I live at 15401 Bryant Avenue South, one of the three houses, I'm the farthest north house. And we have, we get a lot of the noise from that concert right up there, and there was never an issue with the noise volume or the timing of it. We have two kids, and, two kids that are nine and seven, and we had a baby, and he was two months old at that time, almost three, and it bothered us, it didn't bother us one bit. We had, you know, the windows shut with AC, and everything was fine with that coming right up there. It was, you know, they were very considerate of the timing and shutting it down, and we had no foot traffic up there, so security and everything like that was fine in our area, where during the summer months, we do get random foot traffic, people parking in front of my house to actually go on the hill in the middle of the night, and there was none of that even for the concert. And when, you know, when they addressed this, you know, like with any of the noise that, you know, that they were saying, that they would be done at a certain time, they were done at a certain time, and it was no louder than a thunderstorm or anything like that coming through. So, I support Buck Hill, and they're very considerate throughout the year, not even just for the concert, through other avenues of making snow for drifting onto our house, anything that they do, they are in consideration of the neighborhood. And I think that we should support the local business, you know, it's great for our city and great for all the people. And also, there's another place round town that you could go to hear a concert like this, and very respectful-type music too, not loud, obnoxious, you know, and just, you know, just normal fun-type music that they provide for entertainment, along with, you know, all the other entertainment that they try to provide for us all. Thank you.
We did have one name on the signup sheet as well, Tom Taylor.
Good evening, Council. My name is Craig Danham. I work for Twin City Lawmen, and I was hired by Buck Hill to take care of the security for the concert series. So, with that being said, we secured the perimeter, we had cyclone chain-link fence around the red area, I had my officers or my guards or my security officers patrolling the perimeter. I also had a squad car that we provided of our own service, patrolling the neighborhood and making sure the signs were up, making sure, checking the decibel ledgers, making sure that there was no illegal parking, and also making sure that there was no shenanigans going on in the neighborhood. We've patrolled it regularly, also patrolled Buck Hill and the hotel and the whole area as we were doing security. I can't remember exactly what day, but Dave, our owner of Buck Hill, received a complaint, and I believe it was from this lady over here with the blonde hair, little lady. I personally got in my truck and drove to the neighborhood, patrolled the neighborhood, asked people, walking their dogs, old and young, if there was any problems, if they heard any noise. I had one couple say, we didn't even know there was a couple, a concert going on, they grabbed their friends, they came to the show. I approached these people, they were sitting in their cul-de-sac in a group, enjoying their cocktails, in the middle of the, in the middle of the, excuse me, in the middle of the cul-de-sac in their lawn chairs, waiting for something, and I approached them, lady contacted me, and she complained that there was people passing through and going through the concert through the neighborhood. I patrolled the rest of the neighborhood, I received no other complaints. In fact, I went to the adjoining townhouse and ran into the elderly ladies, and they were over 65, and they heard the concert, and they passed through her neighborhood and her cul-de-sac to go see what the neighborhood, what the noise was. And she was informed that these other ladies were informed that she, they could not pass through her cul-de-sac or through her yard. And they were not concertgoers, I approached them, talked to them, they were upset that this lady approached them and told them that they could not go through their yard. They had no other problems with the concert, we had no, they didn't say anybody about any drugs, any urinating, any fights or anything going on in the concert or outside of the concert area. I think everything went smooth, I think I did a bang-up job of controlling the area, doing security, and like I said, I approached multiple people in the neighborhood, and I had no other complaints except for this lady that is behind me, that is, and she was, like I said, she was sitting out in her cul-de-sac like she was anticipating a problem, and I believe that's her right, but we didn't have any issues, and I was making sure of that, personally. And like I said, my name is Craig Danham, I'm going to put my name on here. Do you have any questions for me?
Sir, this is not really a question and answer, this is testimony.
Copy that.
For future reference, please direct the comments to the commission.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And as I was saying, I think, before, we do have Tom Taylor on the signup sheet, if Tom would like to talk.
Good evening, my name is Tom Taylor, I'm chair of the Burnsville Fire Muster, but I also am chair of the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Committee. I'm here tonight representing the Chamber of Commerce, and while we don't have a specific policy statement on the PUD that's up before you, do want to express how important we as a group, and how we as a group, as the organization feel that Buck Hill is to the economic vitality of our community. When you look at the strategic plan that is being developed, or that has been developed and is now being implemented, much of it centers around Burnsville being an economic draw regionally. Burnsville, I'm sorry, Buck Hill is a major part of that, every bit as much as part of the Burnsville Center, heart of the city, the high school, the others. So, as you're considering this proposal before you, please consider that this is a major economic draw for our community, appreciate it. As far as, I wanted to hit on one other area that we have, which is the, which is chair of the Fire Muster, is that our concerts go to 11 o'clock, and I can say that our crowds are significantly larger than what they had last year and what they are targeting to have, and we have very, very few complaints. Matter of fact, when we go around and we speak with people, we get primarily comments that are positive. We probably get one or two comments negative on the noise and the others' issues with us each year, and that's usually the same persons that are complaining about that. So, traffic, all the other things that go with it, and from what I can see, that everything I see with this, I think Buck Hill is managing this extremely well, even to the extent of doing the noise studies and the traffic, the areas with that, way beyond what I think that most communities would go forward and do. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else have any comments on this issue?
Hi, my name is Jen Knapp, I live at 1105 Circle High Drive. I am outside of the 350-feet that you guys allow residents to notify, that you guys notify residents within. You know, it was loud, I had, I'm on top of a hill, at the bottom of the hill, I had a neighbor yelling up to the top where I live, turn it down, thinking it was me or my neighbors having a party or something like that, you know, and it's just, that's not good for our community. They since did realize that it was not us or my neighbors, it was the concerts. The thing is, is back in 2017, residents had spoken to you guys about the 2018 concerts, and they were concerned about people trespassing on their properties to get to these, to this event. And Buck Hill promised them, no, we didn't know that this would be an issue, but we'll take care of it, you know? And so this year, you've got complaints again that people are trespassing. You know, the noise was excessive, and the other thing that I'm concerned about is the concerts went past 9:30. These were things that they promised would not happen. And, you know, I, I support them having a venue during the summer, but I think to reward them for breaking their promises from last year is not the way to go. You know, I don't want to have these concerts go to 10:30 when they couldn't stop them at 9:30, you know? 10 is excessive at this point, when they couldn't contain what they had intended last year, so...
Hi, Patty at Burns, 1101 Circle High Drive. I came here a couple of weeks ago with my husband, but he did all the talking, so I really wanted to come back up and say a few words. We are outside the 350-feet, but the first night of the concert, we had our doors and windows closed, and the TV very loud, and we could still hear the bass of the concert. It was really loud. And one thing we noticed with the complaints is that it's like northwest, and it's definitely a certain area, and so one suggestion would be, is there any way they could put up some type of barrier, because it seems to be projecting to one side more than the rest. So that would be an idea. But yeah, I just want to reconfirm that it was really loud last year, the first night. The second two nights weren't as loud, we could hear it, but it wasn't as bad. So, I just think it's important that they maybe do it on the weekends, and also the time to let them go till 10:30 gets a little bit late, especially if they're doing during the week concerts, and doing every night, four nights in a row is too much. I think if they could spread it out, it wouldn't be quite so bad.
And as the public hearing is still going on, anybody else that would like to speak at the public hearing portion of the meeting? Ma'am, you've been up already?
Yes, but, I'm trying to clarify something.
That's fine, I would like to let you know, though, that this isn't designed as a counter to what somebody else said, unless it is new information.
No, I've never seen that man over there before, nature.
Ma'am, please, why don't you come up then?
My name is Linda Stout, yes, and I live on the northwest part of Buck Hill. Anyway, the gentleman who is the security guard, I don't know if he was referring to me or the lady next to me, but I have never seen him before in my life, and I was not, I don't live on a cul-de-sac, I just wanted you to know that. If he was referring to me, if he wasn't, I'm sorry, but I just wanted to let you know.
I am required to ask three times, is there anybody else interested in speaking to this issue at the public hearing portion?
Good evening, I'm Dave Stone with Buck Hill, and I want to thank you for letting me come up and say a word or two. I, again, I appreciate everybody's comments and concerns tonight. We want to be good neighbors, we feel we did a successful job last summer with our concert series, and we can wish to continue that moving into next year and then years beyond. I just wanted to have a couple of clarifications. Regina did a nice job kind of summarizing things, I wanted to kind of point out a couple of details within there, if that's okay. With respect to the sound, there was, you know, a little bit of extension that went beyond the 9:30, we're aware of that, we had a late start with some of the bands and kind of our first year getting up and running. I think the times we went, the latest night was 10:12, that was our first night, we did dial that back in to around, I think it was like 9:45 or 9:46, so we did go a few minutes over in the nights that we ran our events. Again, there were a few other issues with the recommendation moving forward that we'd like to address, and we feel that a 10:30 shut-off time is appropriate. I've done our, looking at our communities around us and felt that that's a reasonable time for the weekends, and we've looked at how we've ran these concerts and how we can be better neighbors. We would also like to push the concerts into the weekends, more of a Thursday, Friday, Saturday show, and respect people's weekdays. We don't see us running four consecutive nights either, again, this is our first year trying to see how that would work. We are looking at a smaller, maybe a two- or three-night event as we move forward and grow into this on more of the weekends. So, we're trying to take into consideration some of the concerns that we've heard with respect to the 10:30 shut-off time. Many people are asking, why do we have to shut down so early when the other events around the community south of River here go much later in the evening? So, there's a lot of issues... So there's a lot of issues associated with that. Could be bad weather, where we're adjusting times and start times. But we want to have everybody have adequate time to get to our shows and feel that 10:30 is a reasonable shut-off time. The neighborhood meeting we held, we went up and beyond the 350-foot distance requested. We went to 500 feet. So we had several hundred residents that we reached out to. And again, as Regina said, there was six, I think, that showed up to our, our meeting after sending out several hundred invitations. I think there's a, the demographics from our concerts, we pretty much targeted 40- to 60-year-olds. And it surprises me with some of the security issues that are, that came up. We felt we did a pretty good job managing, hopefully, the crowd control, as Regina said, traffic, parking was also an issue that I think we handled fairly well. I think the one issue, again, was the runtime and the sound. And as I mentioned, the first, first night or two, as we were working through our, you know, growing pains, there was a technical, I'll say malfunction with some of the subwoofer not performing for about a 20-minute period of time. That was corrected. We did have the technician, a technician from the actual speaker manufacturers on site, and he corrected that during the show. I think that was on our Wednesday night show. I think that's also probably the night that most of the complaints came in. So we did address that on the site. Our last night, Friday night, was, I think, our most successful, and I don't believe there was maybe all but one complaint that came in. We also had many people, many, you know, thousands of people that attended the four-day that we had there that had a great time. So we, I did bring our production sound engineer with us that performed the sound study with Regina present during the first night of the show. So if there's any questions or specific information you'd like regarding that, gentleman's here as well to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Shattuck, 15028 Windmere Lane. We're about half mile away from the venue. And the only point I would have would be, I would not like it to go too late, especially on a weeknight. 9:30 seems good to me. 10 seems to be a good limit. 10:30 seems, so I think the staff had recommended that they not push the time out. I can't quibble about the music. Someone might not like classical music or choose any, any band that I might like, and they might not like that. So I'm not here to contest that, but I would just ask the consideration of time. Thank you.
Anyone else that wanted to speak to this issue? Anyone else that wanted to speak to this issue? And I will close the public hearing then. We'll bring it back to the Commission for Discussion, Commissions Questions of Staff. Questions of the applicant.
You go first?
Go ahead, John. Commissioner Workman?
Go first. Thank you. I'm going to try to chunk these off into digestible pieces. Regina, for the end time, as I'm understanding it by the PCA regulations, is that based around the level of decibels hitting residential neighborhoods? And I'll just tell you where I'm reading this. As far as noise levels cannot exceed 65 decibels at nighttime, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., and then from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., noise levels cannot exceed 55 decibels. Is that the main justification for the 9:30 end time?
That's correct, Commissioner Workman.
So if they were to achieve 55 decibels, that could, that could feasibly give them a later end time?
I think that could influence the staff recommendation. There's certainly other factors to consider, too, but that was the main driving factor for that, that specific condition at the end time.
Because we don't want to be in compliant with the PCA?
Correct.
Okay.
The, for noise, you measure at the receiving land use. So you measure, in this case, at the residential land use. And we're the policing body behind it. And so even though it's the MPCA standard, we're the ones that, that enforce the regulation.
Okay.
Commissioner Workman, for a second.
Good.
Regina, that is state law, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And the only thing that helps that would be, in this situation, distance and other methods of absorbing acoustic signatures, the only way that we're going to see less than the decibels that we're seeing in their, in their map?
Mr. Chair, thank you. The modeling they did is assuming essentially kind of the hot, the top end of what they're operating at, and then modeling that as though it's happening all the time. To, to control that, yes. As you know, those are, you know, absorbing the noise, blocking the noise, or otherwise reducing it at the source.
Or larger distances.
Yeah, over distance.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Workman, sorry for interrupting.
That's okay. So that's, I guess, something that I'm going to chew on for a little bit. The, I just want to jump over to the, the letter from Mr. Solner and the recommendations and what he agreed and didn't agree to. And I don't want to go through all of these, but there was one that I thought I might just bring up, and that was regarding the notification to the neighbors. If they were to send out a one-time notification with a listing of their shows on one schedule, would that suffice that need rather than sending one out prior to every, every show? I'm not trying to broker a deal between the city and them, but I'm just trying to figure out ways to meet in the middle on some of this stuff. Wondering if that would be acceptable?
With all, Commissioner, with all the recommendations, they are recommendations from staff. As a planning commissioner, you do have the ability to strike any of them, to amend any of them. I would say that would be up to you. The intent was, we received a number of complaints, not only via phone call, emails, letters, but then at the neighborhood meeting that we didn't know this was going on. There certainly are other venues for receiving information, local newspaper, Star Tribune, social media, website. We have a, just with our own city website, we've got a great way to promote, you know, events. But we were hearing from people that were immediate neighbors that said we just didn't know. So to help communicate that, we wanted to be consistent with our, our notification requirement per state requirements, and that, that's where that derived from. If you don't agree with that, again, you can certainly strike it or change the language.
Okay. Regina, the, the distance is based on what a PUD requires. Is that pretty, pretty accurate? I mean, we don't have any other distance requirements that vary based on different applications or different issues?
So on the specific notification for zoning applications for planning and development for variance is 350 feet. That's the standard requirement per state statute, and that's what we are consistent with, with any of our notifications for public hearings.
Right. And that's, that was where the basis for this came from?
Correct.
So it's, okay.
Maybe we should have Mr. Solner up here to discuss some of these.
Sure. We have the applicant back to the podium, please.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
If we can go through, maybe we do need to go through these, the letter with the recommendations and then your response to a couple of those.
Sure.
Yeah, basically, if you wanted to start with number three, the noise testing issue, we note that you would prefer not to handle it in the way that staff recommends?
Yeah, I, I understand the concern, and we did do some testing with Regina out there the day of the show. We do have professional engineers that will be out there, and the cost to bring another third-party consultant out there is something that we were not, you know, planning for and was not part of an earlier conversation. But we think that we have a solution that we could, again, do testing each night. The atmospheric conditions are going to change each day. We, we understand that has a big impact on, on how sound travels as well. And we're suggesting that we go up before the show during the sound testing each day and run a test and have city staff present as a compromise opposed to bringing another third party in there. That seems excessive to have, from my perspective.
How do you want to do this?
Well, we all want to say something. Yeah, exactly. I think, why don't we, why don't we, okay, I'll run through them, and then why don't we, whoever would like to ask a question, that'd be great. So, Commissioner Workman, do you have any more?
Well, that was, I guess now we're here where I kind of wanted to land. So if we're going to start at number three, I'll concede and let somebody else speak, and then we can kind of work through these.
Go ahead.
Okay, and, I mean, what you guys were discussing was doing a sound check before anybody shows up, taking readings, correct?
Correct.
And then leaving that at that level as your max?
Correct.
Okay. That's one of the things I need to know, because being a band member myself, sound checks are for mixing mostly, not so much for volume. So if you're talking about leaving your volumes at that level, when your crowd comes in, you got 4,500 people in front of these speakers, that sound then is going to be muffled within those people. So by the time it reaches those people in the neighborhood, you should be sitting even better than when you started with the sound check originally.
Okay. In response, I'm not an engineer with that.
I understand that. Here's my question. Most sound guys out there, once they get going through the nighttime and everything's good and everybody's having a good time, tend to get a little bit greedy on what they want it to sound like. When you go from Loverboy to a James Taylor, you know, guy, it's going to be different. That Loverboy, those decibels with that, with the bass itself, and he'll tell you that, is going to go wherever it wants to go. You don't have to direct it one way. Bass is going to go where it goes, okay? So if you do accept that level at wherever it is, and everything is sounding good at the top of the hill by neighbors, if you leave it there and your crowd comes in, they're going to act like a sound shield anyway. Am I correct on that? In some ways. I mean, some of your higher speakers are going to go over the crowd, but those bass never reach that level. They're always ground level. So you're going to have a really nice buffer if that's going to happen. If you can make sure your sound guys are doing that, you're going to sit pretty good.
That's what we'd like to do. We'd like to.
I know, I just want to correct that that's actually what the plan is, okay?
Yes. I also have our sound engineers here today, too. If you could add some detail to that, I'd be happy to have them come up and speak directly to your issue, if you'd like.
I'm, I don't need that specific.
I think, why don't we save that, see if anybody else has any other questions for you, Commissioners. Commissioner Jim.
All right. I'll ask my question to you, but it might be better directed towards your sound director. I'd like to know specifically what you did before the concerts to, to test. Were you at the properties 350 feet away from the stage to actually do that testing? And then what types of testing, if any, did you do throughout the shows? Because, again, atmospheric conditions change, especially as day goes into night. I'd just like a little more background on what was actually done last year.
Again, we did not test all through the night. We did spot checks throughout the night, where we went around with probably not very sophisticated cell phones personally. I went around, I walked all the way through, over on the neighborhood with my apps, as most people have. Since learned that they're not real accurate, but they do a fairly okay job. We did do the testing with professional equipment before the show, and that's where, again, we had staff with us, and we were in the cul-de-sac at the top, the north, again, west corner of our property. So we were into the neighborhood, outside of our property line. I think the sound gets measured right at the property line, but we were beyond that into the street, the public street back there. Again, the specifics about how all that works, I would like to defer the technical answers to all that to Craig, who's here. Can I have, if you'd care to hear some more of that, technical answer of how he tested it, so.
Commissioners.
I have a quick question. I'm not sure who can answer this, but you had listed in your response letter several other venues. How do they, did you research how they handle?
I did not. Again, the process has been kind of rolling along here, and, but I did, you know, want to make note that there are other community, communities out here that are running well past this 10:00 p.m. cutoff time, and I'm curious how that is able to happen as well, so.
But are there venues in a similar location with neighborhoods surrounding?
Yes.
Surrounding it as well?
Yes.
Okay. Do you, do you know if there's like a consistent way that cities follow to do this kind of stuff?
So, Commissioner, I didn't specifically research the different cities that were listed either. Certainly, there, there are different conditions. For example, I, I did hop on Google to look at Apple Valley, the, the zoo's amphitheater. And it's in the middle of the zoo, essentially, with residential around it, but there's quite a distance. And, you know, noise is different, depending on the surrounding conditions, what, you know, you're hearing at the receiving land use. I don't know specifically what approvals they may have gone through either there or any of these other cities. You know, did they have an approval process? Is it something that just happens and it's kind of, you know, ignored or not tested? I don't know. But because we have a specific request in front of us that is a land use clearance, we need to take a look at the land use regulations, one of them being noise, and that's, that's the specific concern here, specific for this property.
What about for fire muster then? Because that's within Burnsville as well. Do they have to go through the same thing that we're going through with Buck Hill with the noise? Or do they do similar testing or anything like that as well?
Not that I'm aware of. So there's a specific permit that they get through the Parks and Recreation Department, but as far as a specific land use clearance or a specific approval process or testing, that's something I'm unaware that's ever happened.
Okay, good, thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
Couple things to note on, just on that comment, like the zoo.
We're still on, no, let's stay on.
Okay, let's stay on. I was going to answer some of that. We'll wait till we get there.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I mean, I think, I think there's a lot that we can offer. Does anybody else have anything on number three?
I want to bring it back to the deviation. The, I think the point of contention here is that the applicant is asking to use their own sound engineer rather than bringing in an additional sound engineer in an escrow. So.
That, that would be the issue, yes.
So are we, as a commission?
Well, I think we'd like to discuss that, I think, for right now. Let's get more information from the.
We want to just go through these and then come back?
Yeah, then come back and actually talk about them amongst ourselves, yes. For number four, the notification boundary, and, let's see. Mr. Solner, I guess, do you have a method of notifying, what is the current method that you used?
Well, what we did this year, we, for our neighborhood meeting as well as last year's neighborhood meeting, we did in Ballers, per the request of the staff. And this year, we went beyond the 350 feet. We went four, or 500 feet. But again, there's several hundreds of these, and if we're doing a show, it's, again, it's time and money for everybody. We feel that also receiving, because a lot of people see it as junk mail, kind of in your mailbox, that there's other means to communicate. And we plan on doing more marketing this year, so getting awareness into the community a little stronger than we did last year through different social media channels. We also have a newsletter that goes out from Buck Hill, and we'd be happy to put these names on the newsletter email. And. and try to get information out that way as well. Understand that everybody has email, so it's kind of a, where do people want to receive their information from? But we feel there's a lot of different avenues and we just would like to do something a bit more green, a bit more sustainable and not have to continually printing things out and postage and, you know, the effort behind that. So, not that we don't want to notify people, we do, but we're just looking, is there other ways that we can get out there and get the word out beyond just doing what planning would typically do for a typical process.
Sure. Is your schedule set early enough in the year that a single mailing is even an option for you?
I think it is. Again, we'll get probably to this later, the number of shows, but right now we're growing. We just want to, you know, incubate this with our smaller number of shows next year, but have the ability to grow in the future and do different weekends throughout the year. But right now, we're only planning on one event for next summer and we could bundle it all together and do a mailing if we needed to.
Sure. Anybody else for question number four?
Yeah, I think that would be appreciative just for the fact of some of the communities you're going after or that are near there aren't social media people, you know, things like that. They may not get on social media every day and know what's going on. So the old, you know, snail mail option, sometimes what people are still used to. But if you're able to have that in advance and do that that one time, they know that that's going to be coming out sometime, them knowing that it's coming is half the battle. And you putting it out one time is then going to suffice that. If they don't get it for some reason, that's a correction that's in the mail service, not you guys.
Anybody else for number four? Number six then, you're, I think the issue that you have with number six is the words pre-sale?
Correct. We tried to market and sell as many, you know, tickets as we can ahead of time to make it easier for our guests when they arrive. But it is an outdoor concert and a lot of people waited to last minute to see if they wanted to come or not. So we just wanted to strike the pre-sale and have the ability, if the shows are not sold out ahead of time, to still offer up to our guests when they come the day of the show that there's tickets and room available for them.
And the limit, the size limit for the event is still for forty-five hundred?
Correct. Everything stays the same.
Commissioner Timmerman.
How can you ensure that you'll have adequate staffing for security at that point then? I mean, if you have eleven hundred pre-sale tickets and then it's just a hot summer night and everybody wants to come out, how can you ensure that you'll be staffed adequately for three thousand additional patrons?
I think what we intended this last year, we staffed for higher numbers and with the anticipation of dealing with the larger crowds. We found that, again, the demographics that were there were not younger folks trying to sneak into our event. We had, I think, a very good perimeter set up. But I don't see us, you know, not wanting to continue to have adequate police presence and our own personal security there. So the pre-sales really give us a determination of how many we think are coming. We can look at the weather and make some anticipation with that. We kind of do that now in the wintertime with parking, when it's snowing on Thursday or Friday and it looks like it's going to be a great weekend. We know we need to call in shuttle buses to deal with the traffic and we notify them all, we get our buses. So we're always kind of looking ahead a little bit, so. I envision it to be very similar to that. If sales are going well, we'll ramp up and discuss the security issues which we think might come upon us. And we are using, again, outside sources for that, so.
Just to clarify, did you do any same-day sales or gate tickets last year?
There were a few that came in, yes. Most of them were pre-sold.
I'm curious, do you have a percentage on how many of those there were?
Well, what we actually found is people were coming to the site and buying them online on their phone, like in the parking lot. So they were showing up to us as day of, but they were like happening on our property with their own handheld devices. And so I could go back and look at how many were actually day of, but I don't have that information with me.
That's number six. Anybody else have any more questions for number six? Number nine then, sir, is the conclude time. This is where we do have the other venues and I guess other venues. Should we talk about that first? Okay, anybody?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
This is where I was going to go with this. At the zoo, it's a band shell. It's set into the ground. The music is really controlled, so, and with the neighborhood not as close, it's pretty easy for them to control that, especially with the actual venues that they have there. I did notice that in regards to the other programs that you have here, those are all annuals that everyone knows is going to happen at that certain time. And some of those aren't as huge as Loverboy, you know, out in the open. Those are set up in tents and they're usually a local band and I know from being there and stuff, it's a different type of level of, type of noise that comes through those things. That all being said, your ability to have these concerts may become a little bit easier if these concerts were annuals or something was going on where the city even knew that this was going to take place and people could actually annually set a calendar that this was going to happen, the neighbors know that this is going to happen. It's like Fourth of July fireworks at Buck Hill. We know that that's going to be booming when it gets dark.
Actually, it's New Year's Eve.
Oh, New Year's Eve, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
There are people that climb up there.
What I'm getting at is we all know that's going to happen and you can hear them from my house. It's fine, because we all know that's going to happen. But it's nice to know it's going to happen. Not to say you have to run your show that way, but it's an option of adding something more to the spice of Burnsville for another annual to bring people into town from out of town, because this is going to happen. So those annual shows do that and I don't think they have the volume that you have as well for some of those.
As a comment, I think if we observed most of these two, I think the venues have a lot larger site. And I think because of that, we're looking at the opportunity for the sound to drop to an acceptable level and that might be why the times are beyond what the MPCA requires. Anybody else on this item? Commissioner Timmerman?
Just like to comment as well on some of the locations and follow up with a question then. We've talked about this. The zoo is set up differently. There are large trees and oaks to absorb sound. There, I mean, there's greater distance between the stage. The fire muster is directed towards woods again and towards City Hall. These are annual events, Panoprag and some of these others. People plan for these things. And so I think we're comparing apples and oranges when we look at some of these other events. Now that being said, I think the main issue here is the time. And so setting aside the comparison to what other cities do, I think we have to look at what the state law allows and we have to do accurate measuring of that. And I think that's when we can determine any changes to the times. I don't think, from what I've heard, we did a good job of that last year, of getting accurate readings at the time of the show, at nine-thirty, at ten o'clock PM. And so for me, I think that it's premature to consider expanding anything beyond that. So my question for you is, have you, as far as you're planning for this year going forward, have you, have you thought about breaking your concerts into weekends versus weekdays, into daytimes versus evenings to better meet the regulations that are already existing rather than trying to skirt within those boundaries of the regulations?
Well, I think we heard from a lot of our guests, you know, during the week was challenging for them to come out as well and we want to respect people's, I'll say, traditional work week. So we were planning on the same weekend and trying to make this maybe more of a tradition and lock into some of this as was previously mentioned. So the Thursday, Friday, Saturday is, feels much better in a three-day package. And if we could do that again, perhaps, you know, at another time in the season, an event like that where we can, you know, offer that up as more of a traditional set schedule. We're all for that. I appreciate the comments on the other communities and what they're doing. You know, Parlex Music Festival, again, it's in a park setting and there's, you know, ten thousand people there and their main act doesn't come on until ten o'clock at night. So again, I'm concerned and curious how some of these other communities are able to bring in national acts. They do a big country night there, then they're, you know, they're like us, trying to find a larger performance there. So I think there are some similarities, but the zoo, I live in Apple Valley, probably about a half a mile away from the zoo and I can hear them at my house as well. It's not loud, it's not obnoxious, it's music for a couple hours and sometimes you sing along, whatever. But it's, it does move depending on the atmospheric conditions and things like that, so. Our hill is set up with a natural amphitheater with the topography of the hill that's there and we tried to position the stages, Regina showed several different studies to try to find the best way to reduce the sound from migrating outside of our venue. Things that we are looking at moving forward is to project the sound further, further down, closer to the stage and bring the people in even yet tighter. So it's a, things that we're looking at to try to tighten that bowl up, if you could say.
Anybody else with that one, or should we move on to number ten?
I'd like to go to number eight when, if we get a chance. I know that they accepted that or agreed to that, but I'd like to discuss.
Number eight, sure. Let's go to that at the end then. Number ten was the lighting. And Regina, before we ask, the recommendation is pretty clear that it's for lighting associated with the concert. So we're actually talking about stage lighting and other not lighting that helps the attendees leave the site or anything else. We're talking about the stage lights, the spotlights, the flashing lights and that specifically.
Specifically related to the stage activity.
Right, right.
Encore's done, lights are off and we have our security lighting that was on to escort people out and we ended up clearing the parking lot out, I think, within thirty minutes after the show, so.
Okay, and since there was a request, number eight, the quantity of concerts, Mr. Timmerman?
So I asked Regina earlier, why six last year? I'm going to ask you, why six last year, why ten this year? And at what point will you be coming back for a request for more?
Well, we feel the summer is relatively short and that's where we're looking at offsetting our winter revenue as some of the gentlemen mentioned here, you know, looking at us as a business and trying to find ways to generate additional revenue and support the community. When we bundle these shows up and try to find some efficiencies with the stage and the fencing and all that kind of stuff, we would like the ability to have a couple, two or three events, shows throughout the summer. Perhaps we do something in the spring to kick off summer. Perhaps we have the one in July, the week after the Fourth of July, which I like that time of the year for the venue that we're currently doing. We also have our Bucktoberfest where we do our tent sale, which is a regional draw for ski and snowboard equipment. And it would be fun to maybe partner with that weekend and do something, you know, perhaps with a Bucktoberfest and a beer garden and a band or something like that. There's also, you know, fire musters. Is there something we could do, you know, during that time of the year to support the community and do a show? So there's opportunities throughout the year that we would like to at least have the ability to grow and say, yeah, we could do something here. So when we started this, it was, the idea was pick a weekend, each weekend, and then it was like, that doesn't make sense if we can consolidate and kind of figure this out. So where we're at right now with the thought process is just that if we can have some events that coincide with other activities within the community. There's also, you know, the random acts that are coming through town that have approached us, you know, wanting to do a bluegrass festival out there on a Saturday afternoon or something like that. So that's why we're asking for ten, so we have the ability to self-perform our shows as we grow and learn how to, you know, manage this whole process. But winter is a totally different animal for us. You know, we're packed with, you know, parking and our guests there and got our hands full with ski and snowboard operations. But we think there might be some weekends where we can consolidate and maybe do a couple events throughout the year. We don't have those on the calendar right now. The only ones we are looking at is the same timeframe except pushing it into the weekend, so we're not going Tuesday through Friday. It would be Thursday through Saturday and with that event this year.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
Can I ask some, since he's up there, can I ask something that's off of this that is actually kind of pertaining to questions I had?
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't make it to one of the concerts last year. I'm one of the guys that goes away for summer sometimes. But regarding alcohol and stuff, you guys obviously have a fenced-off area. Are you serving alcohol out there or is it all bring your own? What is it?
No, we had a liquor license. Actually, I had two liquor licenses out there. So we did wristband, checked IDs, purchased tickets, and then you redeem those tickets at the stations for alcohol.
Okay, and that's just the perimeter of the fence for the party?
Inside the perimeter.
Okay, so anybody else that comes from a neighborhood and walks with a cooler and sits on the hill?
They.
Are they getting kicked out?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, we had security, again, around the perimeter of the fence, watching the woods. And then we had a vehicle driving around through the neighborhoods. We also had two uniformed police officers from Burnsville there each night with a squad car in the parking lot as well.
Okay, okay. I just wondered if you get those stragglers coming around, that could be, okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, I had just a couple of questions for Regina. I think that she could help for some clarity. I think Ms. Stout talked about a permanent amphitheater. That actually was not what that ordinance said, correct? It's for a non-permanent amphitheater. And the ordinance requires that to be treated differently than a permanent amphitheater.
So the specific request is, it's essentially for a temporary concert venue, temporary stage. There's language that speaks to permanent amphitheaters, so that's what we referenced as a, as a change to the city code for the specific planning and development request. There is also some threshold requirements for an EAW, an environmental assessment worksheet, which are triggered at five thousand attendees, employees, personnel related to the event. So that's why you see the cap on the numbers. It's reflective of that.
And the staff use the amphitheater standards to help drive what the recommendations are for this non-permanent amphitheater?
Correct.
That's what I had for staff. Anybody else have any questions here? Commissioners, that, Commissioners, your pleasure. Commissioner Schornman?
I guess, I'm just going to go through these and tell you what I think about them. For number three, I don't have a problem with the applicant using their own engineer. I don't look at that any differently than past applicants that have brought in their own traffic study engineers and we've allowed them to use that information. So I don't personally have an issue with that variance request for number three. For number four, I agree with Commissioner Timmerman that there are probably people in our community that don't have social media or, you know, aren't on their cell phones as often as others. And so I would recommend maybe reducing that from a notification prior to every event down to one if it's possible with the schedule of planned events. For six, I don't have an issue with tickets for sale at the gate. That doesn't seem to be an issue based on what I heard from the applicant. Number nine, the state PCA ordinance says it has to conclude by ten PM. So if we're going to follow the state law, I don't see an issue with. I don't see an issue with extending it to 10:00 PM, as it's written by the PCA. And then for 10, I think that one, we kind of just figured out on the fly. So that's where I'm at.
Commissioners, any other comments, any other discussion?
I do.
Ms. Henderson?
I agree with everything Commissioner Workman was saying. However, um, number nine, I would like to see Thursday, Friday, Saturday go till 10:00 versus sometime during the work week at 10:00. I'd rather have that at 9:30, the recommended 9:30.
Discussion?
I, I, I would even go one step further and, and I would discuss with you guys even further. A Sunday through Thursday, 9:30, just because it is a work night. And your Friday and Saturday nights should go later, till that 10 o'clock. If you're gonna have a concert on Thursday night, uh, maybe limit who's gonna be your, at your venue that night or who's gonna be playing to people who don't mind going to that a little earlier.
That might be a little hard for us to manage in a, in a recommendation, correct?
Okay.
Regina, the, the whole idea with the 9:30 was to give the, um, the applicant time to wind things down by 10:00 to meet the MPCA standard, correct?
That's correct. You know, from a, I think we're, we're closer, um, to be bound by that 10:00 PM timeframe. I mean, you certainly has, have the flexibility as a planning commission to, um, to maybe place some limits. But I would say going beyond the 10:00 PM time, timeframe, which doesn't sound like, um, you know, there's a lot of discussion around. But that's when the, the noise regulations really cut off. So, um, if you say 10:00 PM or 9:59, um, I think, you know, we'd be okay with that.
Regina, um, who is responsible to police that?
Um, the city is responsible to, to police that.
So basically, we're asking staff to, to, to do that, which I believe is why staff have that half hour in there to allow it to wind down. Kind of like the night at a bar, yeah. Here's a question. What consequences or what happens if they play till 11:00 o'clock?
Uh, the city would have the ability to essentially revoke the planned unit development if they're not in compliance with the approvals.
The amendment?
Correct.
But there's no fines, there's no anything monetary, there's no nothing, just, we're gonna take... So my question is really...
Yeah, not, not that I'm aware of specifically. I mean, there may be civil charges or criminal charges, but that's kind of beyond my, my scope.
Discussion, Commissioner Timmerman?
So that, that's a good segue into what I wanted to talk about. Based on what we've heard from residents and from Buck Hill themselves, from staff, they, they didn't meet all of the guidelines that were laid out for this last year. And it's concerning to me that we would extend them additional liberties when they haven't, um, you know, followed, followed the rules that were set out for them. That being said, I think that there's significant, um, benefit to the city as well as to Buck Hill and the residents for having events like this. So I think that we need to do a good job in, in making these recommendations more specific and then ensuring that the venue is being held to them. And, and so, again, I, I appreciate all of the, the neighbors' input. I'm concerned that six event nights or days becomes 10, becomes 14, becomes now we want camping on site and this is now Rockfest in Somerset, Wisconsin. Maybe that's great 10, 20 years from now, but I think we need to be really pragmatic in, in how we're setting up these recommendations. And so I do have a couple specific, if I could talk through the, the 10 recommendations and, and kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Workman was saying. I agree, I don't think that there, there needs to be a third-party noise consultant. But I do think that there needs to be strict guidelines on how the testing is being done by Buck Hill's, the, the company they're using to do that. And so I'd like to add, um, something to this recommendation that requires them to test the sound during sound check, that requires them to test it 30 minutes into the start of the show, an hour into the start of the show, and then nearer conclusion. Because then we're actually setting some parameters to when the sound check is occurring and we can hold them to some concrete guidelines that they're, that they're meeting what's required by state statute.
Commissioner Timmerman, hang on a second, please. Is that kind of testing, is there a way to do that kind of testing that, that is actually valid from, within what you do?
Yes, you can do that.
Is that something that a person working on a soundboard with some equipment is able to do?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that could be done. I mean, as you know, having a, a procedure laid out in advance that everybody can look at it upfront and say, you know, this is how we're gonna do it. This is when we're gonna check it, this is the kind of equipment we're gonna check it with, and this is where we're gonna check it. You know, once those are all defined, I mean, the actual going out with the meters, I mean, you can...
Does the meter, does the meter have a method of, of checking frequency?
It depend, it's gonna depend on the unit that you're using. The state guideline is based on overall noise level.
Right.
Um, so you don't need one that gets into the specific frequencies. I mean, obviously, as we've heard in the concerns, the low frequencies are at issue. But, um, yeah, to, to get equipment that monitors overall level wouldn't be, I don't think would be challenging.
Is there a methodology for reporting that then? That you use in your, in your daily business?
Yeah, um, the, the state actually provides a guideline on how to do the, you know, the state, uh, guideline on noise control in Minnesota is the name of the document. There is a procedure, they have, even give you a form to fill out, um, if you're doing something, you know, for them. But I tend to use that because it's got, you know, it's got a spot for every bit of information you gotta gather and what you have to report. So, um, the, the only, the only thing I would raise about the, the short-term sampling, the standard as it's written applies, you know, a percentage of an hour's readings. You know, to do something where you'd say, if you were to turn around and say, you know, this is or is not very definitively in compliance, you'd need an hour's worth of data. But you can, you know, assuming levels are relatively uniform, a spot check's gonna give you a very good feel of, you know, are you over or under? You know, if you're right at the edge, that's where you'd start to say, well, do we wanna do more?
Sure, thank you. But you do think that, I mean, even if we tested for an hour, we could come up with some, some idea that they're within the, the guidelines?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I think that needs more thought, some more development as far as what the, the testing is, especially if we're, um, not requiring a third-party, um, sound company to be doing that.
Commissioner Timmerman, does it sound like something that has to be ongoing? Or does it sound like it's something that has to be done until they're demonstrating? An understanding of the locality?
I think that's a really good question because, I mean, this, this was the first go-around and if, if they become comfortable with that. But I also don't know, will these sound engineers be at every show, at every production? Will they have the ability and the equipment? Is that part of the package? Because if it is, I would think they should be testing it at every show. But certainly, they would get a better idea of, you know, what they're working with over time.
I, I guess what I'm suggesting as a discussion point is if, if the applicant has staff and they have a, um, they have a knowledge, I mean, if, if staff is working toward, understand, if their staff is working toward what is the, you know, how do we stay within the, the limits? And at what point do they have to continue to do this for our benefit? I mean, obviously, if there's complaints, perhaps there's a trick. I'm trying to suggest a direction for language here for, uh, any recommendation that might happen or even just discussion about it. Commissioner Workman?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Are we intended to review this again in a year?
Uh, the specific request before you would stay with the property, um, until a different amendment. Maybe we're before you at a future date. But this is not, the request before you is not on an interim basis.
So even if we were to implement the things that Commissioner Timmerman suggested, we wouldn't really have an opportunity as a commission to review, uh, that data? Cause this is kind of it, this is it.
They're, they're asking for a PUD amendment.
Can we make a motion to turn this into another one-year review?
I...
Or would we have to deny the...
Yeah, it's not their, it's not their application.
It's not their application. They would have to come before you and be in agreement for an interim use permit, which that's the route we went last, last go-around. As we checked in with Buck Hill, they provided, um, documentation saying they were okay with an interim use permit.
So if this is, if this is staying with the property, then I, I would actually revise what my thoughts were. And I would require them to maintain, um, sound checks at every concert. Because three, four years go by, yes, they've become more familiar with the layout of the hill and where the sound travels, but they might get a little more relaxed in forcing that too. And so I think that there should be, um, regular check-ins. I mean, we've heard a lot from the residents about the sound, that's the biggest issue here. And, I mean, the, the comment that hit me the hardest was from one of the residents who was furthest away and could only hear noise. Because they were so far away, they couldn't even appreciate the free show. I mean, maybe it would have been enjoyable if you could hear the lyrics and the sound. And so that's, that's what's really struck me is the sound is the main issue here.
Commissioners, further discussion?
Well, if I may, thank you, Commissioner. Because we don't have any, I guess, data from these other events and how people are actually monitoring what they're doing, it gets tough because we don't have a baseline of what other people are doing.
True.
I mean, this is something new. I mean, it's a small venue in a small area and there's neighbors right close by. For us to have something going forward for this year, and this is a yearly thing, correct? But this is for, this is for...
This is forever.
Until they want to change something.
So, um, if, if this...
That's what I guess I'm asking as yet.
If this would, would become approved by city council, um, as example stated in the recommendations for the 10 per year, that would run with the property.
So if we move to have something in this stating that they have to, um, at every concert, give us some data on what the levels were, then they go forward with that until they decide they don't wanna do it anymore and they have to come back and request not to do that?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I was asking, okay.
Just for a point of clarification, that's what item number three is suggesting. What we're saying is that they can provide their own engineer rather than pay the city consultant fees and escrow to do it for them.
The, the difference is I'd like to have more specific requirements of when they test, from where they test, and so that at each concert, it's consistent and that we can get that background data and make sure that they're, they're meeting those restrictions each time.
From a staff standpoint, we, we wanna make sure that we're able to review the information and if we don't have staff on, on hand to interpret the noise information provided by the applicant, that we have a consultant that we can go to to review that information. That costs money, that takes staff resources as well. So, um, part of this recommendation is cost recovery as well.
And, and the staff is looking for real-time information as opposed to simply a report of what happened at the last concert or the last weekend?
Um, that, that would be ideal.
Commissioners, Ms. Workman?
So, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse here, but in the requests or in, in item number three as it's written then, Regina, is the intention that staff would be at every concert monitoring? And if staff was unavailable, that a consultant would be sent in lieu of staff?
Um, the intent would have, be to have a consultant expert onsite, someone that is familiar with the techniques of monitoring sound and can fill out the noise survey that's available, um, provided by the MPCA guidelines that they have. So someone not specifically staff, but a staff consultant.
And would that staff consultant be testing at the same, um, frequency that Commissioner Timmerman's suggesting? Or would it be under a different? I guess I'm, I'm not familiar with that in particular.
The consultant would be testing per MPCA, um...
Rules, guidelines.
Rules and guidelines.
Okay.
Are those rules and guidelines specific enough that we could simply insert into this recommendation that they must be tested within MPCA guidelines?
I think that would be the words that you'd use.
I think that's, I think that's what we should insert here.
I don't know if you're able to weigh in at all, Andrew, maybe provide some guidance?
Yeah, a little bit. I think as far as methodology, you could refer to the state guideline on noise monitoring, that, that would be sufficient. That, the state guidelines don't get into, you know, your point of, you know, do you monitor that during sound check? Do you monitor that, is this a continuing, you know, do you set up your monitor all throughout the concert from sound check till teardown? That would, that, that wouldn't, that isn't defined in that guideline. And whether a one hour, you know, a one-hour sample would meet the state guideline for, you know, you have a complete hour. But then is that, that, that then kind of, I think comes back to you guys on if that's, uh, how representative is, you know, however, however many of those hours you would monitor during the period.
How do you pick which hour? I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's what we're trying to get to here is trying to, where, where do, where do we see there's something that we can do here for Buck Hill and for the neighbors?
I think with those guidelines, I mean, unless we still set something specific like 30 minutes after the start until an hour and a half after the start. Because you need a one-hour time block to get an MPC...
If you wanna get the stamp of approval, yeah.
Right, so somehow we need to put just a little bit more than just the MPCA guidelines. We need to put a one-hour block in there.
I think the PCA standards are an average over a one-hour period. That is the PCA standard, as it's written in our background.
I guess my point is which hour.
Well, and then are we getting too far down the rabbit hole?
I think we might be.
I think we are.
Yeah.
I don't doubt that the person that's doing the testing is gonna do a thorough job and they're getting paid as a consultant to do that job. And it's not gonna be something that's, I understand where you're coming from. But I, I think we might be over-regulating that item if we're gonna start dictating which hour of the show that it's, it's being tested.
The reason that that was a concern to me was because there was conversation about taking away that third-party sound consultant and allowing the applicant to do their own monitoring. And that's why I wanted to make sure that there was something specific there. If we're hiring our own, um, or, or asking Buck Hill to hire a third-party, I, I think this will happen naturally.
And Buck Hill would be hiring a third-party engineer?
No, I think that the way the, the recommendation is that the city would provide it as a paid, um, escrow item.
Right, and then my recommendation was to scratch and allow them to hire one. But if they hired a third-party, I mean, at this point, it's, 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 is the, is the city gonna hire the third-party or is Buck Hill? And that's where I think the point of contention in number three is coming from, right?
Okay.
So if, if, if we're not gonna come to an agreement, I mean, we're, I'm not married to number three saying that I, you know, I'm gonna sacrifice this to allow them to hire their own engineer. But, um, I trust them to do the right thing is where I'm at.
Basically, the applicant is asked to use their, the, the staff, their staff that is currently already hired to be onsite, who is trained to do the work that otherwise the city staff is doing.
Right.
So, and typically, a, a somebody running a soundboard may or may not have that kind of background. But if, if the recommendation... But if, if the recommendation is written to provide somebody that has de- a demonstrated level. Is there a, um, a standard, um, is there certifications? That, or is this simply uh, somebody with, who is familiar with sound going around with a appropriate device?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
And verifying.
I think that would probably be sufficient for this.
Okay, well then I had a, I was mixing that up with their um, sound study that they were providing. I thought this would be a, a sound engineer company doing the uh, the testing. Okay. Why don't we?
Yeah, let's, let's, why don't we, why don't we move to, to some specific recommendations so that we can see if there's a, if there's a consensus here? I guess. You know, clearly we have a number of, of recommendations that, that the applicant has issue with. Do we agree with applicant? Do we want to see something different if there are, can we boil it down to which those are so that we can move this along presumably to vote? Uh, is there any further discussion about the, the noise?
Yeah.
And how to document it? Well, the whole, the whole thing's going to come down to wording, but in, in, in a nutshell, what we're going to be asking is that on any given concert night, his people are going to be taking a certain reading. That's going to be giving us this data that's going to be efficient enough for us to go back to a neighbor and say they are compliant with the state law. So they're doing what we're asking them to do.
That's what it needs to be.
Right, the time that that happens, you can do it, whatever, you could say one hour before the concert's done. You know, in retrospect, most concerts have their high, you know, their main act at the end of the night. But if you do it one hour before the concert is done, that's your full hour. And take what you get at every concert that way.
And that's also in the evening, that's also.
Yep.
Closest to the end of the show.
Now, whether that ends at seven thirty at night or ends at nine thirty at night, it's the last hour of the show.
Commissioners. Reasonable, other ideas?
Because if they do a show in the afternoon from two until four, it'd be from three until four. And then now that data comes back to us. And if they're consistent like that, then we're going to have the same coming in and out.
I'm comfortable with that.
Me too.
Will the data that we get from them be readable by city staff without having to hire our own interpreter then? I mean.
That report would definitely list the average D B at the, at the testing locations, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, I think in the end, the, the summary would provide you what that had monitored, the L ten and that L fifty level. And that's, that would be just a straight comparison with the standard.
Right, and obviously if there's any issue with complaints, you know, staff is having that. And obviously anybody in the neighborhood who is having issue should be calling in if there's an issue to them. And it can be checked. Notification boundary? I think we, do we have enough there?
Yeah, I think we discussed that um.
Let me, let me ask one question. Is it, is it, is it our goal to make sure that every neighbor is notified by this applicant? Or is he simply required to do what most people would do and, and try to notify people as best, to the best of his ability? Yes, because I don't think everybody is going to be able to get notified in the same way as another person. You can't expect that.
Right, and, and the, what, what's, what's been explained by them to us seems reasonable?
Yes.
Uh, do we want to change the number then if they're going to mail a single item, single schedule?
He already explained that he's already over, what was sure, so.
We'd encourage that then?
Yeah, I think that's a good way to word it.
Uh, ticket sales, I think we're in agreement on that? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to ask, the wording basic could change on tickle sales limit to forty five hundred total sales.
Seems reasonable.
Whether they're pre or not.
Total. I mean, that, that is the limit, that is the limit for the site and there's.
Yeah.
They're the ones who stand uh, the potential of losing the ability to move forward if they exceed five thousand, five thousand or more.
And I, I think um, that specific condition um, reflects the ability for them to provide adequate security, um, so there's a little tie there.
Right.
Um, security and traffic control, I think security was the biggest um, concern ultimately. Number seven does reflect that, that cap as well, it just doesn't get into the more specific language like number six does.
Does the commission have any issue with um, Buck Hill's ability to manage their concert goers?
I wanted to think about this one a little more. Um, and ask, are there other events in the city where we have a, a certain per capita security threshold? I mean, at any event, do we say if there's a thousand people, there has to be twenty security personnel? Is there anything we can compare that we can put a concrete number in here?
Uh, so with any special event permit, um, we do route to our um, fire and public safety. Um, and they do provide recommendations based off of the number of attendees, if alcohol served. Um, something that might be unique to the, the specific event like traffic control or something. Um, so we do get a reading from, from them. Um, I would have to look back to the staff report to see if we had a specific recommendation about number. Um, we don't have a specific recommendation number based off of number of people. Um, within police considerations, but typically there is a ratio or a some. Um, there is some review that goes into. The request for uniform personnel.
I think for Buck Hill, the limit is really the threshold for the A W. And uh, you know, that's a pretty strong reason for them to keep it at these numbers.
Yeah.
And the issue of pre-sale or not, uh, I, I think that the applicant did suggest that they are looking at, looking forward with their sales and they are projecting. I do know that they do uh, a pretty good job of managing the people with the ski hill during the winter. Um, when some of the neighboring streets park up, this, the shuttle buses definitely are making the rounds. I think they're pretty aware of how to handle a crowd.
I think so too, I, I just think that if they sell eleven hundred tickets and suddenly have forty five hundred people show up, that's, that's problematic. Um, and that will certainly um, create issues on our city police, our, our city fire. Um, and so I'm okay. I'm okay with leaving it the way it is, but I, I just wanted to bring up the, the fact that if, if we're opening to same day at the door sales, we at least should consider it.
And I, I guess I'm on the opposite fence of that with today's technology and stuff. I don't know of too many people that I know that go buy a ticket the day of, except for that on the spur of the moment. I can understand the concern, but for most people, having their ticket already pre-bought is a necessity for most concerts. So I'm not, I'm not as concerned with that, but I do understand your reasoning to think that way.
And most of them are on the phone.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm okay with this.
Time. Thoughts, commissioners?
Ten Thursday to Saturday.
I mean, but you're saying ten, nothing after ten, period.
Well, I think we have to follow P C A standards. Right, and I did like Commissioner Henderson's point about if they're going to be during the weekday. To be more considerate of the time, maybe nine thirty, but. I think uh, ten o'clock is appropriate.
We need, we need language. Your pleasure.
Music related to temporary concert event shall conclude by ten P M.
So no weekdays, no weekends, just ten P M?
If you want to amend it, I'm okay with it.
Well, we're, we're, we're trying to come up with language that we could discuss after a motion, I think.
I think we've all agreed to the weekends being a little later and the weekdays being nine thirty.
Well, and if we were. Sorry, if we're already addressing our sound and that's something we don't worry about, you know, because they're going to be compliant. Then I'm, just because I'm the way I am, I'm more apt to say the Sunday through Thursday nights of a nine thirty cutoff is a little easier for people who are looking at that in the neighborhood. That we were looking at the neighbors from business standpoint. Ten o'clock is, is a lot more convenient for a band, for what they're doing for a concert type thing. Sun doesn't even go down until nine thirty.
So we're adding weekdays with times into this?
I think it does need to be differentiated.
Okay, yeah, I think it's a give and take between business and neighbors. It's where we're looking at this, I. Yeah, because we know weekdays are never going to change, so if we put it in stone, it'll be fine.
Further discussion?
Just to clarify, that means nine thirty weekdays, ten o'clock weekends?
Sunday to Thursday, nine thirty for weekdays, Friday night, Saturday night, ten o'clock.
See, I would be okay with even throwing Thursdays in for part of weekends.
Me too.
Sell me on that. I'm, I'm more than open to talk about it.
Well, you know, in the summertime, most people will have a shorter work week.
Yep.
As well. Um, most people, I shouldn't say most people, but some people do start their weekends on Thursdays.
And I guess I'll take that one step further. The applicant is actually already talking about taking their middle of the week concerts and moving them to Thursday, Friday, Saturday anyway. So that give my chance to schedule a little bit easier, having a one shot time cut rather than worry about different ones. What are your thoughts?
Others, commissioners?
I would, I would agree with that then, just based on the fact they're changing.
So Thursday, Friday, Saturday is ten, but the rest of the week is nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Yeah.
Commissioners, discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion to change that particular recommendation.
Item number nine.
Well, why don't we go down the list if they, and pick them in order so that Regina has the mac then?
Are we done with ten?
Yeah, ten cleared.
Number three?
We're good with number ten?
Yeah, I think we don't have to change it, we already discussed it.
Wouldn't.
Temporary concerts, yeah.
Well, wouldn't it be shifted a half an hour? Then it would be ten during the work week and then ten thirty Thursday, Friday, Saturday, because it's that half hour to get everybody out for the stage lights.
Well, but that's, this is the point I was trying to make, is staff has nine thirty so that it does wrap up by ten, which is the M P C A limit.
But I thought though too, the P C A gave us the authority to vary a little bit as well.
No, actually they don't, but what they give us is the ability, what they give us is the ability to look at the um, the limit at the property, the sound limit at the property. So if they're after ten o'clock, they are required to turn down. I mean, the, the, the rule for M P C A doesn't change.
Right.
And um, I think, did you move on to number ten?
I think.
For lighting specifically, that, that, I think the discussion is it's okay for the lighting to end. Um, at ten o'clock for the nine thirty shows and then ten thirty for the um, ten o'clock shows.
So it was the lighting that we were talking about?
Okay.
Yeah. And that's just the additional stage lighting, I mean, they're always going to have whatever parking lights they need and.
Security lights.
Yeah.
This is just temporary concert lighting.
So there does need to be a wording change that says that then, that says that the
Stage lighting.
Stage lighting or just stage lighting? And then it's ten during the weekend, ten thirty on the weekend.
Say stage lighting.
Stage lighting?
Regina, do you think you have enough from our discussion here?
Um.
We, I think we should hit the items uh, specifically that were brought up by the applicant and make sure that the language that we believe we have is the same as what you have.
Yeah, if, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, number.
Running through it.
Let me, let, let me walk through the different items and if you guys hear me say something wrong, let me know.
Oh, yeah.
So for number three, we're agreeing that the applicant's sound engineer has the ability to perform this function. And must submit the report to the city.
And must follow M P C A.
Correct.
Monitoring standards?
Monitoring guidelines.
Monitoring guidelines, correct. Um, number four, um, we're in agreement that the applicant can do his due diligence in notifying people to the best of his ability, but not necessarily to be all inclusive.
Right.
He doesn't have to make sure that everybody gets one.
Do you just want us?
Phrase that?
Strike that entirely, um, so.
The applicant, I think we can.
With recommendations, we like them to be either a yes or a no.
Yeah.
Um.
I, I think, I think what we have here is that the applicant shall provide notification to property owners. Uh, via um, the mail, via, and, and other.
Communication medium.
Media that, that is appropriate. Would the, would the limit, uh, I think, well, I think, you know, if we, we leave the three fifty limit and he decides to go farther, that's fine. But I tell you what, shouldn't just say that it's fine limited to one if it's inclusive of the entire series? Instead of each individual?
I think that's fine, it has to at least have thirty days though, I mean, if somebody's planning a wedding in their backyard, they want to be able to plan around that.
Uh, we, we don't have a thirty day notice here though.
Yeah. The thirty's in here as it's written.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's for each concert, we're talking about a one time deal.
But that, that's what I mean as.
Thirty days, thirty days prior to the first.
Exactly, yep.
You got all this, you're making the motion?
As agreed.
Ticket sales, we're just going to strike pre-sale?
Yeah, maybe add the word total.
It's already in the next line.
Is it?
Well, it, limited, limited to forty five hundred is a total.
Okay, good.
Regina, you agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
And number nine? Saturdays through Wednesday and Thursday through Friday is the time spoken. We said Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Correct.
And then the rest of the week.
And then Sunday through Wednesday.
Sunday through Wednesday, right. And the motion was made by Commissioner Workman or Commissioner Timmerman?
You want a motion for the entire?
Yeah, that's what we're working towards here. Actually, is, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for the entire proposal.
Okay, Commissioner Timmerman has a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Ten, we were fine. Number ten, you were.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did, I did skip ten.
Yeah, I.
Yep.
Because lighting associated with the temporary concert basically says stage lighting.
Right.
Yeah. Shall conclude with the times and dates that we talked about.
Well, this, isn't it just ten o'clock?
Basically, yeah, well.
Nine thirty on, nine thirty on?
Ten P M, Sunday through Wednesday, ten thirty P M, Thursday through Saturday. Is what was discussed.
Yeah.
So we're letting the lights run an extra half an hour after the, after the, but just, these are the show lights.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
So if the band stops playing, why are the lights still on?
No, no, that's what I'm getting, no, that's, you caught me off guard there, no, the, this should basically mimic the time the band stops.
We're going to put stage lighting associated with the temporary concert shall conclude by ten P M.
Right.
Yep.
And just leave it there, so Wednesdays.
Put the word stage.
They could leave them on for a half an hour if they want.
Well. Or you add nine thirty to it. Mr. Timmerman, it's your motion.
Why?
Um, there's other things associated with bands that could be going on outside of onstage.
Those are not the stage lights that this refers to?
Right. I mean, it depends on what band they have, what type of um, um, special effects, what types of um, they may have banners in the back that are actually showing videos on screens that are doing things that are going, things like that, so.
But when do those end?
They end when the bands, when the noise stops.
Commissioner Timmerman, it's your motion. Commissioner Timmerman, it's your motion.
I'd like to. I'd like to amend the motion so that we can address number ten. So everything we've discussed for the other recommendations, and then with number ten, I'd like to say within a half an hour of the concert events concluding.
So again, I ask.
That language is parallel then to number nine, which dictates what time the concert ends. So it would be lighting associated with the temporary concert shall conclude within thirty minutes of the concert event concluded.
Okay. Is there a motion? There's a motion, is there a second? No second for the motion? Okay. Somebody have a new motion?
Unless I can ask to amend what he's doing.
Well, you want to, you want to ask him a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment, that you change your half hour to read at the end of, at the end of the, I want to say the music. So it's not a half hour after the music's done that we then shut off the, the lights on stage. As soon as the band is done playing at nine thirty on Tuesday night, the lights on stage and anything associated with that concert, with that concert, go off. Now, all the lighting for the security and all the lighting for Buck Hill and bathrooms and everything else all stays on, because that's going to be what's going to be on anyway. But what is associated with that show goes off at the last minute when they're done playing.
So stage lighting associated with the temporary concert.
Right.
Shall conclude. Should we just do nine thirty, Sunday through Wednesday?
That was, I was going to ask to add. It's mimicking what happened on, yeah, on the other one, yeah. Sunday through Wednesday, yeah, Sunday through Wednesday night, nine thirty PM. Thursday through Saturday night, ten o'clock PM. That's to shut off lights and music. Hard stop, everybody's done.
So that's my new motion.
Oh, very good. You've accepted it. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Henderson, any further discussion? Commissioners, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. And I abstain. This will be heard on December fourth at City Council. And you're all welcome to stop in and see them if you still have something that you want to talk about. Moving on then to the next item on the agenda. We have a public hearing for EFH Company on an application for a variance for a parking lot expansion located at nineteen oh one West one hundred and forty-third Street. Regina?
Good evening again. The specific property is zoned I three, surrounded by I three, I three planning unit development and mixed use development as well. Aerial photo of the site, specifically south of one hundred and forty-third Street West, just west of County Road five and north of Ames Drive. So we've got three frontages that surround the property, which is fairly unique for a, for just any property. This gives you an idea of the existing conditions, the overall layout, and then the proposed conditions. So the specific use is office warehouse. EFH leases to a specific employer within the city and they wish to house more people on site and would like to park those individuals on site versus relying on off-site parking or street parking. So to do that, they're requesting to expand within the front yard setbacks. So in our commercial zoning districts, any, any, any setback that, that abuts a city street is considered a front. In our residential setbacks, we've got your traditional front yard setback and then the other fronting property line is a, a street side guard. So you can actually get closer to the property line than you can in our commercial or industrial zoning districts. The setback requirement for parking is twenty feet to the property line. The applicant is requesting to be ten feet away from the property line along the County Road five property line as well as the Ames Drive property line. The site will still meet our parking standards. We have a minimum and a maximum threshold. They're basically within that, that threshold requirement. They're also proposing to incorporate porous pavers within this area. So they still meet our green space requirements. They meet our landscaping requirements, landscape screening requirements. One of the engineering considerations is to include a low-impact development agreement that's specific to the porous pavement and management of that. And they are proposing to enlarge their stormwater pond, which is on site to accommodate the additional impervious surface. But again, they do, the use is permitted, the, and basically everything else but that setback is, is meeting our zoning code. And again, the requested variances are for those two setbacks to go to ten feet. Staff does support the request for variances for those two specific setbacks. With any variance request, there are specific practical difficulties questions that it's kind of a check and balance that we run through. That information's provided further in your staff report. Number one, one of the things that we look at is that the property owner proposes to use the property in reasonable manner, not permitted by an official, by an official control. Parking itself is a permitted use. This is an existing Burnsville business that wishes to expand employment opportunities. The other question is the plight of landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. The site is surrounded by those three frontages. It's kind of a corner-ish type plot. Expansion of the, the property, it's not feasible. There, it's encumbered by not only the streets, but other properties. And then the variance granted will not alter the essential character of the locality. It's a fully developed commercial area. Surface parking related to office warehouse use is typical. And then just a benefit, the permeable pavement is added and that's from a sustainability standpoint, certainly a benefit to the city. Included in your packet is a variance guideline policy document. There's nineteen factors that are weighed against. Thirteen positive factors were indicated, two negative and four not applicable, was not applicable or typically stormwater. I'm sorry, typically shoreline type properties. Staff does recommend approval of the request subject to the applicant providing that low-impact development plan and agreement, that the applicant shall provide a photometric plan for any relocation of, of parking lot lighting and meets city code. And that the applicant shall provide a security for the landscaping prior to building permit issuance. They're, they are proposing to relocate some landscaping and we want to ensure that that is still maintained on site and that it's thriving. So if it dies, we have the ability to replace it. Once they demonstrate that it's been in and living and viable, then we release that security back to the, back to the applicant. And that's pretty standard language. With that, I believe we have applicant representative in the audience if there are any questions.
Commissioners, questions of applicant? Questions of staff?
Commissioner Roberts?
I don't know why this came in my head, but I have to ask you. The line from where, we're talking from the road to where they're going to be parking is going to be basically ten feet closer?
Um, correct, correct. In, in some spots, not for the totality though, because of the way parking's set up in, in some of the areas, you'll, you know, you'll be a little further back, but it, it may appear in most.
Okay, my only question is in regards to, from a, don't anybody laugh at this. From a snowplow aspect, the plow goes through there. Now that they're closer, stuff goes flying on these cars. Like, I don't know if they're that close or not, because I haven't seen this actually. Are, we agreeing to be liable for that? The, the.
Is that a bag?
No, the, the property line is not the edge of the street. There's still a boulevard there, which includes a significant amount of grass, plus the, plus the sidewalk, plus more grass to the curb.
Then we probably won't have an issue with that?
Quite, yeah. Other thing here is the site, that parking lot is significantly lower than County Road five for the most part.
Right.
That, that, if you know that building, it sits very low against the road there.
Yeah.
I think also that, I think the applicant has some fairly significant shrub plantings and things up along,
Okay.
up along the road. And while it's not going to stop everything, I, I simply don't see the distance as being an issue there.
Came through my head when, when it got pretty close to the, I was just thinking of that, how we do our snow removal, so.
It's also.
Well, it, it is a county road and you are talking about Dakota County, not City of Burnsville there.
Oh, that's true. Okay.
Took my job.
Told me that earlier.
For one of the.
Questions. Commissioners, questions? Discussion, motion? Pardon me, I have a public hearing. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing for this item. Anyone that wants to speak to this item, we invite you to the podium. Seeing no one coming to the podium, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for your pleasure. A motion, discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Workman?
I would like to recommend that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the variance to allow parking lot expansion located at one nine zero one West one forty-third Street, subject to the following conditions, as listed in our background.
Commissioner Workman has a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Henderson, any further discussion on this motion? We'll have a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no? Motion carries. This item will be held, will be at City Council on December fourth. Thank you very much. We move on to our next item then, and I'll speak slowly so Regina can get back to her chair. And that would be our updates. Ms. Dean?
So from the last Planning Commission meeting, one item moved forward. That was the comprehensive plan amendment. City Council, that was on the consent agenda, that was approved. Next steps is for staff and the consultant to make some minor changes before we send that off to the Metropolitan Council. We're still waiting on response for a couple of comprehensive plan amendments to our twenty thirty plan before we send that on its way, but we're, we're getting close, so thank you all for your hard work on that. Next Planning Commission meeting is December tenth and we have two items that are currently scheduled for the public hearing.
Commissioners, any updates from Planning Commission?
Question. The meeting beyond that then would be December twenty-fourth. Is that on as scheduled?
I believe that will not be on as scheduled since we're closed here at City Hall. We'll make sure you get an update about that.
Commissioners, with that, we move on to our adjournment. I'd be happy to take.
I move to adjourn.
Commissioner Roberts, a second? Thank you, Commissioner Turman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you very much for attending tonight and I did want to thank everybody that came and talked and offered their opinions because clearly we had an issue that we needed to discuss here with our applicant and our neighbors. Thank you.